Ready?
Yep.
Okay, cool. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December 10, 2024 Lawrence City Commission Meeting. Before we start, I'm going to ask Sheri to read off the meeting rules.
Good evening, everyone. Please silence your cell phones to minimize distractions during the meeting. When the mayor calls for public comment, please approach the podium to indicate you wish to speak. Virtual participants should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. When prompted, select "Join as panelist." There will be a brief delay as your role changes. Once your name is called, please unmute and turn on your camera to provide your comments. Please state your name and zip code before speaking. The city reserves the right to turn videos off or mute participants. All comments will be limited to three minutes. The primary format for accessing or participating in this meeting is in-person at City Hall. Virtual access to view or participate in the meeting cannot be guaranteed. The chat function will not be monitored. If you have any trouble, the meeting can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, very good. Thank you very much, Sheri. The first item on the agenda, A, is to approve the agenda. The city commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as ordered?
Move to approve the agenda?
There's a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes 5-0. Next is the consented item, the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and approved by one motion. Members of the governing body may reserve items for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public may remove items identified as quasi-judicial for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes of comments. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
You have to see if anyone wants to...
Oh, sorry. Is there any, is there anything that wants to be removed from the consent agenda? I didn't hear anything earlier. Okay.
Okay. I would move, there was no quasi-judicial. So I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to, let's see, we want to, can somebody properly pronounce this important sacred rock for me?
Injuju Wahobe.
Thank you. Injuju Wahobe? Okay. Injuju Wahobe Sacred Red Rock Project Educational Markers to be placed in Robinson Park.
Did I get it, Kurt? Just hit go and see if it'll work?
No, yeah, just go ahead and pop that up on your screen and I'll take it from there.
All right, that sounds perfect. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Lynn Braddock-Zoller, Historic Resources Administrator for the City of Lawrence. Here with a really exciting project, and I'm not going to go into a lot of background because I know a lot of you have been involved in this project and actually been to some of the ceremonies that we've had when the sacred red rock was moved from Robinson Park and then again when it was installed in its new home. And just a little background is that there was a community group that got together and they secured a $5 million grant from the Mellon Foundation, which is an incredible accomplishment for this group and for the City of Lawrence to be able to tell this really important part of our history. As part of that grant, the group promised to do education and help understanding with the people past, present, and future of how the rock got to Robinson Park, why it's not there anymore, and where it is now, and what the importance of all those stages of the history of the rock mean. And so this is a step in the process. I understand that group is going to come back to you in the near future and let you know about other plans that they would like to present for Robinson Park. But tonight, we're just looking at two interpretive panels that will be placed in the park. This red little dot on your screen shows you that is Robinson Park and Sixth Street is right here. There's some newly constructed sidewalk in the park, thanks to some work that has been done, infrastructure work in the park. And this is the approximate location of where the interpretive signs will be. This is one of the first panels, and in your packet, it was easier to zoom in and read some of the language. I know it's a little hard on just a big screen like this. There's a lot of really good information here and some of the important sketches that the group thought were important to help a lot of people with the understanding that all the indigenous tribes that lived in this land historically were not living in teepees. They had their own types of structures. And so there's a graphic on the panel for that. And speaking of different indigenous people from different tribes that had connections with this area of what we now call Douglas County. The second plaque is exactly for the history of the sacred red rock, how it got to be in Robinson Park, the addition of the plaque for the founders of the City of Lawrence, how that was removed and is now available for people to see at the Watkins Community Museum of History. And then also the relocation of the rock to a park that is very important to the Collin Nation and interpreting their history and their future. So there's a lot of information on these two panels, and it's done in a very good and graphic way that I think really represents the history that we really hope to get out to the public. Both of these panels went through the Historic Resources Commission and, well, let me show you first, I kind of showed you with the star, but this is kind of a mock-up. This is that sidewalk that, and this would be people coming off the bridge onto Vermont Street. This shows it just a little bit better because you can see the buildings in the background right there. So that's right now, the proposed location. We've worked a little bit with Parks and Rec and we think that's okay because of utilities and things, but they might not actually be in this exact location if we have to do some rearrangement for infrastructure or placement or things of that nature. But this is pretty close to where we hope they will end up being. Like I said, the Historic Resources Commission approved the markers, the context, and the location in Robinson Park on September 19th of this year. And then the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board also looked at these markers because they're being placed in the city park, and they also approved the information and the location. One of the only concerns they had was there's not really an audio that goes with these markers, so for the hearing impaired, would there be an opportunity somewhere else to be able to gain this information? And so the group is working with the Watkins Community Museum to have some type of scaled panels that represent these two panels and hopefully an audio component so that we can reach all different aspects of people with disabilities. And the sidewalks in the park will be accessible, so and the height of the markers are set so that they will also be accessible. And so staff is recommending that you approve the historic markers submitted by the Sacred Red Rock Project for placement in Robinson Park. And I think we have a couple of people here, if you have questions specifically about the text or the proposed placement. And then Tony has a little bit of information on the history of the project and them coming back to you with a fuller description of how they envision the park. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Lynn?
First off, I just want to let you know that I apologize, I told you wrong. It says Injuju Wahobe. Yeah, I'm sorry.
And it is, and the pronunciation, they have kind of a k sound on the part of it, and I never get the k right in there, right? And so I'm very sensitive about mispronouncing it because it's very sacred. And so that's why you'll hear me say, I'm getting coached on it. I'm getting better. I'm better than I was a year ago, but it is very special.
I led you wrong, so.
Thank you. Hey, I tried. I appreciate the effort, so.
Yeah.
All right. And then, so to clarify, one question I had was, you're saying you're going to put miniature panels in the Robinson Museum somewhere else to kind of with an oral history?
There will be mock-ups in the Watkins Museum.
In the Watkins, I'm sorry, Watkins.
So that people can get closer and look at the text and the photos and...
Any questions?
I have one or comment. And Robinson Park, that's still owned by the county, isn't it?
I, I'll have to let Tony say where we are in that negotiation.
Actually, the city is firing that park as part of a larger MOU, and we're working on the legal documents right now and hope to have that finalized by the end of the year. I've been working with the county councillor on that.
Okay, thanks. I thought so, just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Lynn, as far as any other options for accessibility, is the kind of the task force group that's working on this, are they still taking suggestions or whatnot? I know what some of these, I've seen in other communities where there's either been some type of code that you can text yourself or QR that will tee up to either one of the local museums that will have an audio that could do a narrative. Is so are those, are you seeking recommendations from us as a commission or is the task force seeking recommendations from the community as far, as far as suggestions for other accessibility options that can be included in this project?
I don't think they were initially seeking them. I think they are accepting all public comment right now for anything that will make this project better and more accessible to more people. I know that had been one of the questions. I don't know if porters online or not with the Parks and Recreation Board because there is no braille on the sign. And so how do we make sure that the site impaired have an opportunity to gather that information? Instead of doing QR codes, they're actually have to kind of really zoom in on it's small type, but they have websites there. They have the website for the Watkins, they have the website for the park, the Coll Park, where the rock is now, and ways to get more information. So I, I think they're still in looking at ways to bring more people to be able to receive the interpretation of the markers. So if you have good ideas, I, I think they're very willing to listen to those.
Yeah.
I know one of the museums that we visited in Germany, that was one of the, as we say, had it wasn't just QR codes, but there was an opportunity through the partnership to log on to another website that had oral history that was shared, so, so that you get that. And since we were talking about everyone wanting to be respectful of the correct pronunciation of the work of, of the sacred red rock, that gives us another opportunity to, as a teachable moment, whether it can be utilized as subsidized for homeschooling as well as for any of our elementary schools or middle schools here that would want to do a lesson on that.
I think that's an excellent idea. It's actually something that we're looking at with the Rice and Dowdell markers, having audio interviews as part of the website so that people can understand different interpretations of the events that were going on at the time because they are very different for different people. So in that case, having police officer interviews, having family interviews, having citizens who were there interviews, because you know, history is what people tell and what you document. And so to try to get all of those feelings and emotions plus their actual ideas of what happened at that event is very important to be able to tell the whole story.
Just another avenue to give the story just more, more life and just more substance to it. So I think it's a wonderful, wonderful option to consider, but...
Okay, we will definitely pass that along.
All right, great. Any other questions for Lynn? Okay. Thank you very much. Open up for public comment. Any public comment in the room? Okay, Sheri, can you see if anyone's online to provide public comment?
Yes, we do have one. Stephen Watts.
Hey, thank you. I want to take this, I appreciate hearing about the signs being put up for this rock that was stolen from the right people. It's sad, though, out here in Zoom land, you can't see the person making the presentation. It's a miserable view. It must not be very important. Let's try to improve the view on the Zoom meetings, please. Thank you.
That's all the comments, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Bring it back to the commission. Any questions or comments or a motion to approve or anything additional you want to add?
We'll let Commissioner Littlejohn make the motion because the mayor...
He's going to say the words right.
Uh, let me get back to it. Hold on a sec. I didn't, never get to, never get to make the motions on these. Injuju Wahobe Sacred Red, I'm sorry, approve the historic marker submitted, I move to approve the historic marker submitted by the Injuju, Injuju, now you got me nervous. Injuju Wahobe Sacred Red Rock Project in placement in Robinson Park.
Second.
All right, does a motion a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you all.
The next item is to consider providing final design direction and authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number two to task order number one with TREC Design Group in the amount of $494,915 for the Massachusetts Street, 14th Street to 23rd Street Multimodal Improvement Project, MS-1-00005.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Aaron Parker. I'm the project manager for the Massachusetts Street Multimodal Improvements Project, MS-1-0003, five, excuse me. And just please give me a moment while I pull up the slides. Maybe more than a moment.
All right, just let me put the agenda?
Yes.
All the way to the right.
Thanks, Kurt. The slides would be better if possible. If not, okay, thank you.
Oh, I mean, they're, uh...
They're PDF in there. Okay, I can work with that. And let me share, let me get to that. I can drive now, Kurt, thank you. Apologize for the delay.
Not a problem.
You got it.
Okay, thank you. I'll start over. My name is Aaron Parker. I'm a senior project engineer with MSO for the City of Lawrence and the Massachusetts Street Multimodal Improvements Project, MS-1-005 is my project. I met with City Commission on April 9th of this year to discuss the concept design study that was put together by the TREC Design Group, MSO, the city's consultant, for public engagement, concept design, traffic engineering, and related for this project. And at that time, we, I presented where we were at with concept study, and City Commission approved the study, which was finalized at that time with the contingency that I returned to City Commission to review certain design details that were brought up at the time and some questions that were brought up by then Commissioner Sellers, if I'm remembering correctly. For me if I misspoke there. And so I'm back to discuss the design and some items, including the ONM costs, the recommended, or the design options and what staff are now recommending, and update on the grant status, which was thought at the time would influence the design recommendation and comparable projects from other municipalities. And so I'll start with the grants update. Here's kind of the agenda. I can leave it there for a moment for those to see. So, um, let's see if I missed anything. I'll end with our recommendations for this project. So staff applied for the KDOT Transportation Alternatives Grant for construction funds for the project. The project was funded in the CIP for design but not for construction. This was a, the KDOT TA grant was a pathway to achieve construction once design was arrived at. And this project was a high-profile corridor that we thought would require almost the highest level of community engagement, which was involved, I believe, three out of four. It was in the master plan to do, so it didn't require the very highest level. And so, um, when I say we were funded for design, we felt concept design was part of this project. So we completed a concept design. Now we're at the point of requesting the commission approve, award of a contract for design. And so the design process continues with the funding that was available, but funding was not available for construction, hence applying for grants. for grants. So we applied to the KDOT, sorry, I had a backpedal there. We applied to the KDOT Transportation Alternatives Grant, which is a grant to, for multimodal infrastructure such as this. We applied to KDOT Carbon Reduction Program Grant, which is for infrastructure that reduces the carbon footprint of the transportation sector. And we applied for the Blue Cross Blue Shield Livewell Design and Construction Opportunity Grant. I believe Blue Cross Blue Shield is who administers, who provides the grant, and Livewell is who the partner was, private partner of the city, to apply for this grant. We rewarded the TA Grant. We applied for 1.4 roughly million dollars, and we rewarded 2.37 million. We applied for CRP at 1 million and were awarded that. And we are waiting to hear back on the Blue Cross Blue Shield Grant. I'll add that the BCBS, for short, Grant is for design. It has a certain limited amount of funding. I'm not 100% sure how much that is. I don't believe it's relatively a lot, but it opens a pathway for a construction grant that is larger and more considerable. So we wanted to apply to add an element of design through the Blue Cross Blue Shield Grant, also in part to partner with the Livewell organization and the community in a placemaking and multimodal type of grant with, sorry, to achieve more than we could achieve with just the other grants alone and city funding alone. If there's any questions on that, I'm happy to discuss. That wasn't in the agenda, but that's a little bit of the background. Apologize for the PowerPoint formatting. Design options, plural, and construction costs. Right now, oh, I'm backpedaling, at the time of the concept design and study approval by City Commission, we had four design options on the table. Those are in the agenda. And right now, city staff are only recommending option C, considering its safety and efficiency and multimodal equity attributes, and the fact that we have received the grant funding that we have and have city match for those grant funds. Option C, as the other options, is a four-to-three lane road conversion and an on-street bicycle lane facility, but also includes physical protection to the bike lanes, which is a vertical element. It's not just paint. And in this option, solid waste would be collected from the median zone, which option C has a three-foot wide median zone. Option B had a two-foot wide zone, where solid waste could not be collected, just to put it in context, from the median zone, and had to have separation of the median zone from driveways to allow solid waste to pull into, near the driveway, collect the waste, and pull back out, which resulted in much less substantial amount of median in the corridor than option C. Therefore, we didn't feel it was as safe of an option from the overall intent of the project from that perspective. The updated cost estimate, well, staff approached the concept design and now requested to be design consultant with a request to provide an updated cost estimate. This would, this estimate does include utility upgrades that are solving issues of known utility deficiencies in the corridor with water and stormwater primarily, I believe also sanitary sewer. And when I say stormwater, there are some drainage issues known on Mass Street, Massachusetts Street. In this corridor and adjacent side streets, there are known sewer issues and known water deficiency issues. So the total of the utilities is in the construction cost estimate, I believe is attached to the agenda item. And that includes a contingency, which in the scale of things at this stage is about right. It's a 5% contingency. So the breakdown is in the agenda item. Commission had asked that we return to discuss curb maintenance from a cost perspective primarily. So I looked at the costs of maintaining the bicycle median lane curb and the cost of traditional curb and compared them. They're roughly the same in this project's example because of the driveway stops and starts. It results in about a 65 per linear road feet costs for either curb. And right now, we don't know if bicycle lane curb would need to be replaced more often, or road curb, or they'd be replaced together. This project would serve as a pilot project for the City of Lawrence and actually for other communities who haven't necessarily installed vertical concrete median protection, as opposed to other methods of protection or just bicycle facilities. And so that, that's an opportunity for the city to be a star on the map for this type of multimodal improvement. If both curbs had to be replaced at the same time, it would double the cost of curb maintenance. So again, we don't know. Some issues that create the need for curb maintenance are water, stormwater drainage along, typically along, in this case, it'd be along the roadway curb. The bicycle lane curb may need to be maintained if it's hit by trucks or that kind of thing. And I don't have any further information on likelihoods or frequencies or impacts, that's that nature of what could happen to the bicycle median lane curb. Plowing and sweeping, I did a somewhat extensive analysis of the costs here, and it looks like, first of all, MSO does have a type of unit that could maintain a protected bike lane. So as we discussed prior, a standard street sweeper would only be able to fit down a cycle track, which is a two-way bicycle lane that's protected, about 10 feet wide plus the width of the gutter, so maybe 11 and 1/2 feet from the curb to the median. But for a bike lane on either side, which is what is being recommended, you need a smaller unit. For snow plowing and street sweeping, typically a skid steer would be the type of unit, most cost-effective, I would say, and common type of unit from what I'm finding, that would do that. And MSO has, I believe, two of these units. One is dedicated to the airport and the other is kind of floating but more dedicated. It sounded, from talking to operations, like another skid steer may be needed, especially if this type of facility is used more commonly. And it may not. So that's kind of a variable. With a project that's nine blocks long, that's a pilot project for the city, we may not need to buy another skid steer at about $100,000 with attachments in this foreseeable future. The cost to sweep and snow plow would increase roughly double to triple. With really rough estimates, I'll have to say, about the frequency of sweeping increasing with bicycle lanes because if leaves are down, it's more impactful to bicycles and vehicles. Increase to the complexity and equipment and personnel costs of going in with a skid steer, it's more intricate to clear out the snow, is what we believe right now. There may be things we don't know yet. So I would say probably the worst-case scenario is what you're seeing right here. But we wanted to make this information available. Here's some examples of other municipalities. Kansas City, Missouri has a bollard and curb-stop protected bike lane, such as what is pictured. I believe this is a picture from another jurisdiction. And they are installing a concrete median style, such as proposed in option C, protected bike lane, soon, if it's, it may already be under contract to install. I did contact them, I got cost estimates, and they do align with the cost estimates that we have for construction. And from talking to other municipalities, there, there is no kind of roadmap to a specific application for when to do what kind of bike lane, how to do it, where different facilities can go. So we'd be part of the pioneering process here, and with the goal of doing something that is wonderful for the community, that serves the community well, serves equity, serves transportation alternatives, and the like. Here's another example, a photo of a protected cycle track. And I would like to revisit, I had a question from one of the commissioners on why a raised cycle track was not considered. And I looked into it with the consultant and reviewed my notes from, I remember it was looked at at one point. And the existing back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb space essentially would not allow for a raised cycle track that doesn't dip at driveway approaches to residences and businesses. It is possible to build a cycle, raised cycle track that is at the sidewalk height above, six inches above the road, that does not dip at driveways. But the, the ramp up for the driveways would have to be inward with respect to the center of the road and the right-of-way on the road alignment to the cycle track. And to meet MSO standards of a 10% sloped ramp or shallower, the median zone would have to be at least five feet wide. And this is just with preliminary estimates. The right-of-way and curb-to-curb width in the corridor varies quite a bit. I had mapped it out based on aerial imagery roughly, the consultant did as well. I'll note as well that the consultant provided a, just a rough estimate of the curb-to-curb width in their concept plans, and this would be studied in great detail during design. And I'm sure there'll be circumstantial solutions. But the reason it would, it wouldn't work to have a raised cycle track with no dips at driveways is there's just not enough curb-to-curb. And if we widened out, we would impact the street trees. I took a look again at the street tree spreadsheet, and we'd be getting into the critical zones of at least a third of the trees, just to widen one side of the road for a one-side cycle track. And then I would follow up with, a cycle track is not recommended at grade or raised in either case, because drivers would have to look behind them, say they're traveling the direction of a bicycle, and the cycle track's on the other side of the road. They'd be looking behind them, whichever side the cycle track was on, to see if counterflow cyclists for the lane they're crossing would be coming. And that's going to be a major safety issue. Many jurisdictions said that to me, and that's what I'm finding. The consultant has also said that. So we would recommend that you approve option C. It's the safest choice. It's the best for solid waste. It would serve as a pilot project. We have funding to build it, and it would, it would increase O&M costs, but would be, again, a shining star for the city, for the region, and potentially the country. Just a great facility that all could use. And we would recommend that you approve the consultant design contract for the design of the project. It is built to design option C. And I would add, if you look at the scope of services, there's many amenities that serve a multimodal purposes in the corridor. There's lighting, utilities, utilities and lighting, but there's also many multimodal amenities. There's floating bus stop islands. All of these are yet to be kind of designed fully, but that all increase safety and inclusivity and transportation And that's what I have. I'll take any questions.
Good, thank you. Any questions?
Couple questions. One, I just wanted to confirm, the 52 feet back-to-back, that's the current width, right? We're not changing the width of the road.
Well, I want to say, yes, we do not want to change the width. Even a few feet could impact many of the street trees, and the, the public highly regarded the street trees, did not want them to be removed or damaged. But the back-to-back width, looking at aerial imagery, is more like 48, 49 feet. 52 is a little optimistic. At intersections, they can get as wide as 58, 59. I've got a sketch of it, but this would all be looked at in more detail. During some of the discussions with the Multimodal Transportation Commission, lane width was a big topic, and we mentioned this is just concept design, we'll look at this during design. And that, again, that comes back to what happens during design. We'll resolve kind of some of these desyncrasies and nuances.
Okay. And the concept would have this protected median all the way to 14th Street? From 23rd to 14th, or would it?
Yes, that's...
In front of, I mean, I was curious, in front of Central Junior High, would people pull in to drop people off? Sometimes, when I'm driving down there, I see that is, I just wondered about if there's been a discussion about having the bike lane there.
Yes. The, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Grant is focused on coordinating with the middle school. And I met with the STEM class there and talked to the students and the teacher. And the students had a lot of, once Andrew said what I was talking about, they had a lot of comments about nearby crosswalks and dangerous situations. And one of the comments was, it's not uncommon to have a family where kids are getting out on both sides, or you're carpooling, kids are getting out on, not on the sidewalk side, but, you know, so you wouldn't want kids getting out into the bike lane. And also cars have to pull in and out, buses pull in and out. So there'd have to be some kind of design down there that, that makes sense and accommodates everybody. And that's where the Blue Cross Blue Shield Grant is supposed to kick in additional funding to kind of track that and make sure that is followed through with.
And, and then I was, and again, this is a design detail, so the answer might be, you don't know yet. But, I mean, when we talk about this three-foot median, what do we envision, is it, is it concrete on the top? Is it grass median? What is in the, inside that three-foot median?
Yeah, that's a good question. So one of the things that we came to earlier on was that solid waste could be collected from a three-foot median effectively. And the, the example that I have found so far, and this is still just concept, is that it seems to be the most effective, that would be the most effective for residents, is to be able to roll their carts into the, down the driveway into the bike lane, when no bikes are coming, and into the median. But how do they get them up onto the median? I'm envisioning what San Luis Obispo did, which is where they had kind of notch outs, so that they put them at grade, at road and bike lane grade, within the median zone. And so with that, and also with discussion with parks, they did not foresee a planted, like grass median really taking well in a three-foot, you know, which would actually be two foot with the half-foot curb on either side strip. They, they recommended we not plant that.
Yeah, that was my guess, but I was wondering. And I guess the same, similar question, like, would the, would they be curved at the driveways? Like, they wouldn't be a rectangle, they'd be curved so people could pull in and out, or how?
Yeah, that's what I would imagine. So there would be a, engineers on, online, but there would be a, I'm trying to remember what it's called, in the industry, like a turning analysis for vehicles, typical residential, even contractors or, you know, delivery vehicles coming to a house that need to pull into the driveway, auto turn, it's called. They, they can track how the wheels track, and they would design it back away from the driveways, probably five feet or something, and curved, I'm imagining.
And I guess my last question, I mean, I'm, from here, obviously, what we're approving tonight, if we approve it, is a, a design contract to get details. Do you envision it coming back to MPO or to us or to the neighborhood at some point for the, some of these final details, or what, what's envisioned there?
I'm not necessarily envisioning that. It could, I believe we were planning on going back to Connected City, but we could also come back to commission if that's remained. But, if that's the right word, but...
Well, I, I don't know if it has to come back to commission. It, I mean, I could see, depending what it, you know, like you said, there's a lot of variables there that if this was getting built in front of my house, I might at least want to see, maybe have some input. But, so I guess I might envision something being seen, again, not necessarily City Commission, but...
Right. We've committed to working with the owners in the area. There is an infill sidewalk section going in on the west side of Mass from 21st to 23rd. There is an infill sidewalk section going in on the west side of Mass from 21st to 23rd. We've already had owners at the community engagement events and just by email, contact me, talk with us about how the sidewalk is going to coordinate with their street trees, with their landscaping walls, that kind of thing. And from discussions with the city, with Tyler Feig at the city, we can coordinate maybe a meandering sidewalk. He did a preliminary analysis. So it wouldn't match the rest of Mass Street, but would coordinate with wanting to keep the trees, work with property owners. We're just committed to working with those immediately affected, absolutely.
And I guess, I guess, I'm thinking this out loud, after the design, we'd have to put it out to bid, and so we'd have to approve a contract. So that'd be another chance for the public to see what the final design was before it goes out to contract.
That is true.
That's true. So we'd have at least, at least one other touch point. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions about the physical dimensions of these curbs that we're talking about, putting in to divide the bike lanes from the vehicular transit area. So what's the idea of the height and the way they're curbed? Meaning, are there steep, sharp curbs on the edges on the automobile side and less steep that you could mount more readily as a rider? Because the main concern I have about this restricted pathway is, in the event when somebody turns in front of you, you have a sharp curb on one end, and you don't have a chance to avoid the traffic as easily. And a mountable curb or these variable insets might be a good solution to this. But I think it's really important for a rider to have some who's not capable of bouncing, you know, jumping their bike off over a curb, or to get out of the way of something that, you know, because we are going to have people turning in front of us on the, you know, on the road, just like they are now. But when you're in a restricted zone, it's hard to escape the inevitable impact that might occur in front of you.
Yeah, that is, yes, thank you.
So I don't know what the height is. I couldn't really tell. I know that the width is, I don't know what they're going to look like. You know, there's curbs at roundabouts, or traffic circles, or, you know, rotaries that we have that, you know, are mountable, where the semis can kind of go over the edge and then get up. And so I don't know how it's going to look. But for me, I think it's important that we don't have, you know, rigid structure on both sides in case there is a problem. But I don't want to get into designing this stuff. I know that the people know what's best. But that, to me, is the only concern I saw about limiting travel, limiting traffic, and then putting us within these areas of turn lanes for, you know, nine blocks.
Not to deflect, but there was a question about the race cycle track. And one thought I had was, could bicyclists, you know, at night or anytime, accidentally veer off into the driveway ramp zone and hit that and be thrown off their bike into traffic? Or, so I thought, oh, maybe bollards at each side of the driveway, or a series, two bollards or something that kind of say, don't go on that side.
I don't want to make it more complicated. I just wanted, I wondered, since this is not commonplace, and we don't have a lot of examples to point to, I just want to understand what the physical dimensions of these things are going to be like.
And I think we talked to the consultant about this. I don't know, Spencer, if you're there, go ahead and add to, what I would say is that we would look at something like that. And I think we did talk about the fewer outs, you know, when you've got only the driveway going out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good evening. Yeah, regarding the curbs separating the travel lane and the bike lanes, we did receive another public comment as part of this process, similar to what you're speaking to, as to maybe we make that curb on the bicycle side a little bit less rigid. So we're going to start with city standard curb and see what that looks like as we get into our plan details, is what our plan was. And then have discussions with city staff to see if we can come up with a curb that's a similar cost, that may be a little less rigid. So I do think that's a valid concern, as you've got, you know, six-inch curb on each side might be a little daunting. I think we want to keep the six inches on the vehicle side to protect between vehicles and bicyclists. But yeah, definitely understood.
Yeah. That was the only concern I had about being in that confined space on a bike with all of the driveway curb cuts. There's going to be more chances for bicycle-vehicle, you know, intersections, more than just the vehicle intersections or the street intersection. So I just want to make sure, if we're going to be experimenting or being at the head of this, I want to make sure that it's a safe environment for the people on the bicycle lane, not just to travel, but also to deal with the obvious bike-car interface that's going to occur along that street, so.
Absolutely. And if I may, I might add that on a normal bicycle lane, you're, on your right side is the six-inch straight curb, and that might remain for drainage. But on your left side, the rollable curb would make a lot of sense.
Yeah, any exit, any obvious, easy exit would be something I saw that might be helpful, but that was one thing. And then, do you have ideas about how you would manifest these notches that you kind of described? Like, would it be every house? Would, or it just be something that's convenient over a certain, so you could drag it down a few feet and then pull it up to the, up to the curb?
I, yes, that's a great question. I had, from what San Luis Obispo did, they made the whole zone accessible to solid waste receptacles. But I'm envisioning some, there might be aesthetics that are something we want to look at. There's also where the home is and the driveway in relation to where the meat, where the, maybe the front walk is, or we might look at that in more detail, I think we would, to see if we would allow for one set of recessions, maybe with generous, with, you know, some folks, a lot of folks are bagging up leaves and putting them out there and certain times a year or so. Yeah, we would look at those things.
And then the last thing I had was, do you have, I know you've met with the neighbors, but I had some initial pushback when we talked about this originally, about taking right-of-way from, from the landowners that already has, you know, big trees and vegetation and plantings and historical stuff on it. I think what you were getting at earlier was, you're going to try to be mindful of that in light of, or over, maybe perhaps some of the design standards we're trying to go after? Is that what I'm getting at?
No, absolutely. We'll coordinate with owners. The design standards allow for meandering sidewalk. They allow for integrated curb retaining wall type structures with sidewalk.
Yeah, I want to make sure that was touched on. So thank you very much.
To the mayor's comments, I was just kind of curious, would there be any sort of, like, color indication or anything for, like, riders that they would be coming up on the sidewalk or driveway, where there might be some sort of cross-traffic?
I believe that NACTO, the standard for bicycling lane infrastructure, has striping standards for interfaces. Spencer, do you know offhand?
Yes, and I believe if I'm correct, the city has adopted some policies regarding those markings, if you're referring to those green markings that are typical. If I recall correctly, it's at, you know, high-traffic driveways, so, you know, probably next to the grocery store and other locations similar to that, likely not at your residential You sparked a, a thought of mine of regarding the median. It could be discussed whether that median be of red, or so that it sticks out more rather than concrete, so it's a little bit more visible and creates just more visible separation. That could be discussed during design. But yeah, related to the markings, we would plan to follow the city's adopted policy guidelines.
Okay. Well, thank you. I was just curious to see exactly, just the mayor sparked an idea in my head about that kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And I believe in the concept design layout sheets on the April 9th commission attached, there are, there are some preliminary ideas of where some of the striping will go.
Okay.
It, that all sparked one other comment, question I had to ask, which was, has there been, I think Cotton's has street parking, right? Like, right off the street, would this, would they still have street parking? Or have we had that discussion with them?
Yes. So all the street parking was to remain based on community engagement, where the community highly valued that. There are apartments, the hardware store, businesses.
Okay, just confirming.
I know that we did look at, just to add, some reverse-angle parking, not near intersections to allow for less of a conflict between a bicycle lane and those entering and exiting the road for street parking. Where there wasn't reverse angled parking, I believe the bicycle lane routes behind the parking, outside of the parking. And I think that is not commonly used here in Lawrence, but I've seen it elsewhere. And I think it's still, it was part of the concept design, and we will look at that further during design.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment?
I'm with Sustainability Action Network, and we've been advocating for effective and safe bikeways for 17 years now. This is a big deal. Thank you. Not only is this a very notable corridor for Lawrence that's been under consideration for at least 10 years for separated, protected bikeways, but we feel that option C particularly is an excellent design that is worthy of this corridor. We'd like to thank, for instance, Melissa Seeburn and Melinda Hargreaves, or anybody in MSO who has been involved in hiring some excellent transportation engineers, Mr. Parker being one of them. Engineers that, you know, more so than some that were on staff even five years ago, know how to design separated, protected bikeways that are for all ages and abilities. And we feel that that should be, become the standard. And in a way, one reason I say it's a big deal, because Lawrence with this project and the Ninth Street project from Illinois to Vermont is really coming to age now. You know, from that point of the little green bike route signs to the white-stripe bike lanes to a side path, now we're at protected, separated bikeways, safe for all ages and abilities. We feel that should be the standard, and we are really grateful that it's being utilized here. We'd like to see it on Bob Billings to the West and any arterials and collectors that, for a couple of reasons, there, with, with, since the pandemic, you've probably, everybody probably has noticed that bicycle traffic has considerably picked up in this town. That's one major trend. Another major trend is that there now are e-bicycles. That's, and that's getting many more people on bicycles. But also, the implications for bikeways that aren't necessarily separated, maybe protected, like a side path, shared-use path, that could be problematic with e-bicycles that could be going 30 or more miles an hour, one-wheels, scooters. If these kind of vehicles are on shared-use paths, might not always be safe for pedestrians. So we'd like to pursue this as the model.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate you.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and I'd just like to bring up a shared-use pathway. That's, I believe, what you used on Naismith when you made it more bicycle-friendly, is you put a multi-use path on the, the east side of the street. And I think that's worked well with, especially with the green markings that are on 21st. I'm not saying to do this here, but I just wanted to point out that I've seen it, like, these multi-use pathways being used, and I do think they can be used correctly. But I'm not sure if that's the case here. But something I just want to point out is that you've done community survey results, or you've done community surveys, and I think the community survey satisfaction, or whatever it's called, it was done in 2022. And traffic flow and congestion was one, I think it was the number-two thing on that survey. And I just would like to see that taken into consideration when you bring up these traffic reports. So I just want to know, how much longer will it take to get from 23rd to 14th Street after these changes are made? Has that been considered? Because if, I think it should be considered, if the number-two thing that our community wants from the city is for you to correctly do traffic flow and congestion, then I will at least want you all predicting what some of the implications to traffic flow and congestion will be after you do this. Also, I just wanted to say, the presenter made a comment about how we'd be part of the pioneering process with this. And I just want to say, if our city, if Florence is a pioneer, our city staff would be the Donner Party trying out a new path to California. I just want to throw that out there. Also, what kind of traffic numbers do you anticipate in 10 years from now if increased population density goes through? I know we'll have more bicyclists, I think. We'll also have more traffic numbers on Mass. And I, like, will the amount of traffic we have in 10 years on Mass call for it to be a two, like, two lanes going both ways, like, in 10 years from now? So I would just like to ask that you all consider that, because I think Barker would be a great alternative to be using. But also, I want to say, fuck Live Well, and why is Blue Cross giving money to cities for streets when they just increase my health insurance? Like, that's absolute bullshit. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Any other comments in the room? Okay, do we have any calling in?
Julie Jones? Julie Jones here, 66047. I think the bicycle expansion is a good idea. I think it helps cut down on the amount of cars down on Mass Street, but I don't know, once they get off the bicycle path, where are they going to go? One thing I kind of keep track of when I'm driving around town is I see extensive bicycles on the streets, I'm sorry, on the sidewalks. And they're not courteous to the walkers, or walkers with their dogs or their children. I live over here by Sunflower Grade School, and I have tons of kids in the morning and afternoon walking past my house. And the bicycles are on the sidewalks, so I'm hoping that as you expand your bicycle program, you will prohibit bicycles on the sidewalks. Also, that you'll require them to wear helmets, if they're, I think, under 15 or something like that. I also hope that as you expand our city in bicycles, that you will require bicycles to be licensed. I think that would help track some of those that are stolen all the time, since that seems to be a very frequent activity I see on some of the community sites that I hang out with. Let's see, anything else I wanted to mention? Yeah, I think the licenses would help pay for this instead of the cyclist, or the homeowners, or taxpayers, I'm sorry, being the people taking on the burden for this whole program. Thank you.
Julie?
William Steele?
Oh, sorry. I didn't notice that my volume was turned all the way down. But. Oh, sorry, I didn't notice that my volume was turned all the way down, but I just want to say that I strongly urge you to approve Option C. I'm not a transportation planner, but I know that, you know, lesson number one in transportation planning, and I know this is true for cars as well as it is for bicycles, is that if you build it, they will come. Infrastructure gets people riding. You know, there's just reams of evidence showing that, you know, when you build connected, useful, and safe networks, a bicycle infrastructure, people ride. And the bicycle facilities improvements that are proposed here are going to create opportunities for people to get from one place to another. It's just as simple as that. Right now, it's unsafe to ride a bicycle between 14th and 23rd Street on Mass. That's why I almost never see people riding their bikes along there. I don't. I'll ride on the sidewalk before I put my life in danger riding along there. So that's why I'm very happy to see that the city staff is recommending protected bike lanes in this proposal. You know, safety first, it's really, it's the way to go. And it appears that they, that the consultants are adopting NACTO's best practices for designing curves to separate bike lanes from the turn lanes. And, you know, as far as Chris Flowers' comments go, I think that they have definitely taken traffic flow into consideration with this proposal. I'm sure they have. So again, if we build it, they will come, I will come. And, you know, I really hope that this is just the beginning of bikeways that are safe and comfortable for all of us in this community to ride on. It's been a long time coming, so please, please approve Option C. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all the comments, Mayor.
Great. Can we just get one comment on the studies regarding functionality of the roadway and any kind of diminished capability of carrying capacity, or how it's going to impact traffic flow? I'm sure this is going to be coming and/or will provide us data, but I want you to comment on that, please.
Yeah, Spencer.
Thanks, Spencer. I was just going to have you talk.
Yeah, Spencer Osborne with Trek Design Group again. So we did a traffic study as one of our first steps with this project, and those were taken into consideration. We took traffic counts. We projected traffic volumes at, I believe it was 0.6% per year for the next 20 years. And that was, that growth projection was identified in coordination with city staff and future traffic models. You know, the Mass Street's fairly built out, but there are some opportunities for redevelopment or growth, so that's why that 0.6% was selected. There's a phenomenon called the de facto, de facto left turn lane, and I know there's some hesitation to some when going from four lanes to three lanes, but that inside left lane, or left through lane sometimes becomes a de facto left turn lane. Folks know that people are going to use that lane to turn into driveways, whether they be residential or commercial. And so there's great efficiency that's expected when going from the four lane to three lane conversion by providing a dedicated left turn lane. We did level of service analysis and traffic delay, control delay analysis at the key intersections, and none of them are planned to fall below industry standards. So yeah, there is a full traffic study that documents those findings.
Right, and then I had seen some comments about functionality when we're experiencing traffic surges, and Mass Street is a, you know, a four lane road to get people in and out of either downtown or KU, and how is this narrowing of the street going to affect its ability to function?
Yeah, so the key times that were analyzed were peak times during a typical weekday AM and PM, which follows industry standards. Are there going to be, you know, delays during KU football games and other things? Maybe. I think what the city has the benefit of doing is maintaining or optimizing those signals within the corridor to help maintain efficient traffic flow.
And are there any costs included for optimizing the traffic signals, you know, using fiber optics?
Aaron, do you want to speak to that? I don't, there's no optimization as part of this project at this time, to my knowledge.
Right, no, there is not at this time. For, we do have other projects that we are looking into, such as for Iowa from 6 to K-10, and as a pilot for fiber optic based traffic signal optimization for signal timing adjustment and signal timing plans. But right now, the signals on Mass are radar detection, but they're programmed at the, I'm not sure if they're programmed at the Transportation Operations Center or at the units, but with a project like this, we may have an opportunity to install fiber. I don't know, Spencer, can you speak to that, kind of back and forth here?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, personally, I'm not sure. They could already be connected. I'm not sure of the details of that. We can learn more as we get into design.
Okay, great, thank you. Other questions, anybody?
No, I would just like to say, it's, you know, I think a lot of thought and effort been put into this project, and a lot of people have been hard on it for, you know, a bunch of years.
Yeah.
But it's nice to see it come to this point, and, you know, I look forward to, you know, kind of seeing where it goes from here, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I'd just say, I mean, I do think, you know, some of the, especially when you're on the first ones to do it, some of those design details will be important, and I'm, you know, I'll be interested to see. I'm a little worried about both the middle school and the Dillons, and exactly how it flows through there, but I'm also confident we can, engineers can figure that out, so. But I think we'll, we'll look at that closely when it comes back through, but certainly I think moving forward with the design makes sense.
Great. I think Mr. Sellers?
So we're clear, they'll need to approve Option C and then read the rest of the motion, correct?
Correct. It's kind of a two-part.
Approve Option C and authorize the city manager to, okay. I just want to make sure, because it's not.
Clear in the motion?
It just says provide direction, I think, so.
Yes, to provide final design direction.
Yep.
Prove Option C, okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Prove up, prove that first, prove up machine.
You can do it as one, I just want to make sure.
Provide final design direction. I move to provide final design direction and authorize the city manager to execute amendment number two to task order number one with Trek Design Group in the amount of $494,915 for the Massachusetts Street, 14th Street to 23rd Street Multimodal Improvement Project, MS1-00005, and approve Option C for the design.
Second?
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much for the help tonight, and look forward to this interesting project as we move forward with our groundbreaking design. The next item on the agenda is item three, considering conducting a budget public hearing for amending the 2024 budget and consider adoption, or adopting resolution number 7571.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Ally Porter, Budget Manager. I was just, I don't have a formal presentation tonight, but I was going to try to pull up the agenda item.
No, just use the agenda thing right here. That part?
Uh huh. So then it directs to this.
Wow, thanks, I.D. Okay, yeah, I don't know what to do.
We can follow it, we can.
Okay. We'll make do.
Yeah.
We're here tonight to conduct a public hearing, which is required by state law to amend our 2024 budget and increase our budget authority. So there are two funds that we're discussing this evening, that is the Special Highway Fund and the Federal Funds Exchange. And really, the reason for this amendment for these two funds is the timing of our infrastructure projects. So Melinda and her team are very talented at their jobs, right? But no matter how hard we may try, we can't start a project January 1 and end it December 31. That'd be nice, but just not realistic. So that's what you're seeing here, is these two funds, dollars are being encumbered but being expended over multiple years. So again, these are two funds. Special Highway is mainly focused on street maintenance, and then the Federal Funds Exchange is for street and stormwater infrastructure.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions for Ally about this budget hearing? Okay, so I think I need to open the public budget hearing at this point in time? Okay, any comments or excitement coming in? Anybody online to talk about it?
Hey, I was looking at that budget item, and I'd like to know how we suddenly end up with an extra $3 million unencumbered cash balance, just magically out of the blue. So I'd like to have somebody explain that for me. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
That is all the public comments.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Ally, would you be able to answer that question for us, please?
Yes, and Kurt, any luck on getting, no? So basically, what's how, it's not, it's not additional dollars. When we planned for the 2023 budget, we had a certain amount of dollars planned. Those weren't all expended, so those dollars fall to fund balance, and then when, as the projects roll, right, those dollars roll as well on the revenue side. So it's not additional dollars, it's dollars that weren't spent in '23 that we're now expending in '24.
So they're earmarked for a specific person, purpose, and then rolling into because we didn't expend them in the fiscal year that they were budgeted for?
Correct.
Correct? Okay, thank you very much.
That's because the project wasn't done.
Correct.
At that time. And now the projects are getting done.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Any other comments? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
You don't need a motion.
Okay, good. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you.
Move to adopt resolution number 7571.
Second?
Look, there's a motion and a second to approve the budget, this, whatever, this, adopt resolution number 7571. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider the content of the 2025 City of Lawrence Legislative Priority Statement.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tony Wheeler, City Attorney. Yes, it's that time of year where the governing body adopts a legislative priority statement that we will share with the Douglas County Legislative Delegation. The legislature will reconvene back in Topeka on January 13, and so staff has put together a document for your consideration tonight. This really is your legislative priority statement, so you can make additions or corrections as you see fit. But as we've done in years past, we do try to align it with our strategic plan. So this is just an opportunity for you to review the draft and provide any feedback that you would like to staff on that. And then if it is passed tonight, or when it is passed, we will make it available, like I said, to our Douglas County delegation, and may, you know, as the legislative session goes on, we may write letters in support on certain issues, you know, if it, if those issues arise. So with that, I'd stand for questions, and, you know, there might be other staff that can chime in as well.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from Commissioners at this point? Any open comments from the public on our legislative priority statement?
Yeah, this is Chris Flowers. I didn't get, I looked through it a little bit earlier today, and I saw something about medical marijuana. I didn't see any kind of, maybe I missed read, but was there any statement about the city supporting recreational marijuana? Is there any statement about the city supporting medical marijuana? I saw something in there from the, I think it was the municipalities, or whatever that group is that we go along with. Their statement on medical marijuana looked like that their main concern was that cities should be allowed to tax it. And here's what, if you, if you go along with that, what you're basically saying is cities should be allowed to tax medication. Do you all agree with that? Should cities be allowed to put their own tax on people's medication? Because that's what medical marijuana is. And it's, I find it absolutely bullshit that our main concern with medical marijuana is if we can tax it, not if we, not if the state can pass it or not. We just want to be sure that if the state does pass it, that we as a city can tax it, that we can tax people's medication that they are using to treat their diseases so they're not in pain. So I just think it's absolutely bullshit that to have some kind of statement that the city should be allowed to tax people's medication. If anything, we should be saying, hey, the state shouldn't be taxing people's medication. So I would just like to throw that out there, that when it comes to medication, instead of arguing that we should be allowed to tax people, that we should be saying the state shouldn't tax it, and we should be saying the state should be legalizing marijuana. I can guarantee you, that's what a lot of people, I think that's what the majority of the people of Lawrence want. But this is the commission we have, so I kind of know what our statement on medical marijuana is going to be. I don't think we're even going to say, hey, let's, let's make medical legal. I don't think that's even a high enough priority for you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments about our legislative priorities in the room? Anyone calling in?
No, Mayor.
Okay. In light of that question related to medical marijuana, the city states that cities should have the ability to opt into allowing dispensaries in their city specifically. There's other language regarding taxation, but there is language asking for the right to be able to allow dispensaries in the city. I don't know about the other stuff, but I do want to make sure it's clear that there are requests to be able to serve that need, and we should only allow the cultivation in regulated facilities. So any other questions about the legislative priorities or comments? Seems like some of these carried over from the past. I didn't, I wanted to kind of bring that up. I know some of these things have been brewing.
I'm curious as to how successful we've been in the past. We never hear that report.
Carryover, so.
Are you really curious?
I always have been, but I've been afraid to ask.
Yeah, well, I appreciate the priorities, and I read through most of them. They make sense, and they seem in line with what I would suggest. So anybody else have any comments?
Tony, I wanted to recommend for number seven, that we remove the last part, childcare. It's kind of left out there on the island, and it's not really substantive or applicable to it, especially with recent legislation that's in effect, or regulatory rules that changed this past year. So, I mean, actually, I think there's aspects of seven that are not applicable for this year, unless we wanted to call something else specifically. But it doesn't seem like anyone else on the, on the. But it doesn't seem like anyone else on the, on the dais has an issue with number seven. So my recommendation would be to just remove childcare, because it's really not, it's not applicable to the, to the bigger piece of what seven is speaking to. It's put on as a caveat, and currently childcare is not a caveat. So either we need to call it out specifically, or give it its own separate line, or remove it and not make it look like it's a performative piece that we're wanting to latch on to. So my only objection right now is to remove childcare from, strike childcare from number seven.
Okay. So just that, after the colon, just take out childcare?
It is kind of hanging there, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. Do we have any history on where that came from? I, I don't recall, and I didn't know.
Came from me, but it got sucked into this, and this is not the intent. The chamber in the past has advocated for childcare. It's been a little bit weak, in my opinion, and we really haven't did our due diligence as a commission to call out exactly what is it regarding childcare. Us as a commission wants to speak to legislatively. So I think it's just been cycled on and held on, and at this point, I don't want us to hold on to something if we're not going to take the time to really think about how we want to craft a policy statement around it, so.
Understood. So take out childcare, and we need to develop something more specific and kind of targeted to that one item. Because you, right now, it's just thrown in as an afterthought. Is that what you're thinking?
I don't even think it's an afterthought. I think it's just, it's a little bit of flag value-waving, virtue signaling that we care.
I see.
And if we really care, then I think we should develop something a little bit more.
That makes sense.
But we can still say, you know, I think there's, we may need to come up with a statement as to what is it in regards to childcare as a commission we support, want to do, whether it's from a policy standpoint, a tax standpoint, an economic development standpoint, what is it that we want to do regarding childcare legislatively?
I don't have a problem with that. Anybody have a problem with removing the word childcare from our legislative statement? I mean, we can bring it up to discuss this more specifically, because I do believe that that is important for workforce development, is to have places for people to take their children if they're going to work in our community. And if, you know, if it's lacking, and again, I'm newer, I don't understand some of the deficiencies, but I think if it's important, I'd like to address it and make it a priority.
And I think there's, there are definitely discussions going on in the community around it. And we do speak to it in our, in the chip, in the community health assessment. So not unless we want to, I think if we're going to call it out on a state and federal level, we need to be a little bit more.
Intentional, shall we say? Or no?
More, yeah, direct.
Direct. Okay.
What it is that we're wanting to, what we're advocating for, and not just childcare.
Makes sense.
Makes sense to me, because it, something like that would be a greater conversation.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay. Well, so do I have a motion to approve it?
So I'd move to adopt the 2025 Legislative Priority Statement with the removal of the childcare statement, number seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0 to adopt the 2025 Legislative Priority Statement minus the statement in childcare in section seven of the first page. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to have a work session. We're going to discuss, receive a strategic plan update on the engaged and empowered teams commitment area for our city plan. Oh, yeah. So I need to read, "The work session provides an opportunity for the city commission to discuss items in greater detail. The commission will take no binding action on items presented during this time. The work session topics are eligible for public comment. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comments." Thank you, Brad.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Megan Dodge. I'm the Human Resources Director here with the city, and I'm also what we call the Commitment Champion for Engaged Empowered Teams. So I'm here to talk to you about what that means and the work that we're doing to advance this important commitment area. So we'll just do a general overview tonight of just what is employee engagement and what we mean by engaged and empowered teams. We'll talk about the key performance indicators that we use to gauge our progress on employee engagement. We'll talk about some strategies that we've been working on to enhance employee engagement, and then talk about some of our next steps and kind of questions that we've been working on. So I'm excited that Commitment Champions have recently had the opportunity to start presenting and sharing more information with you all and with the community about the commitments in our strategic plan. So as you know, we have six commitments, and while the outcomes in our strategic plan are about the work that we're doing, the commitment areas are about how we do that work. And so specifically, engaged and empowered teams is, of course, one of those six commitments, and it's describing our workplace culture, what it means to be a member of Team Lawrence. We want to make sure that people throughout the organization that work here, that they feel trusted, supported, and cared for as we're building community. It goes on to further say that "we invest in and cultivate service to community, individual growth, team development, respect, and trust. And also, we know that our very best as an organization is achieved by diverse, engaged, collaborative, and innovative organizational culture." So that's how we describe engaged and empowered teams. I also like to highlight the importance or what employee engagement means. So essentially, because that's kind of basically what we're talking about. Gallup is a really helpful organization that does research on employee engagement internationally, and they note that engaged employees have higher well-being, better retention, lower absenteeism, and higher productivity. And they note that measuring it and managing engagement is just so critical to the success of our organization, so it's so important toward success on our strategic plan, and it's also so important for employee well-being. Those are things that we really care about. Okay. This is what we call the crosswalk. I think it's become a little popular, but it shows, basically, it's a, it's an illustration that shows the partnership that's required between our outcome areas in the strategic plan and our commitment areas. It truly is a partnership so that we can make progress together on our KPIs. So in engaged and empowered teams, we've been focusing on our KPI that's called the Employee Engagement Index. This is a list of, of those KPIs, and it illustrates, just like the crosswalk does, that engaged and empowered teams happens at the outcome level. It happens at the work group level, it happens within departments, and it also happens as a result of what we do organization-wide. So on multiple, multiple levels, requiring that effective partnership between supervisors, leadership, and HR, and our engagement strategies. We also have, kind of under that gap there, we have some citywide KPIs, and that's looking at the Engagement Index for our internal service departments, citywide, our overall engagement index. And then we also are able to gauge the percent of, of employees that say they're satisfied with their jobs. So with the Employee Engagement Index, we get that annually by doing a citywide survey of employees. There are 14 questions on a number of topics, but basically, they're topics that we know gauge just how engaged our employees are. So some of them are up there on the slide. Employees' perception around the city's reputation in general and as an employer, inspiration for their job performance, alignment of values that they feel, their own personal values and what they see in the workplace. We know that it's important for employees to feel connected with the city's goals. So we've been doing a lot of work around trying to communicate out what the strategic plan means and what their part in that is. And then overall job satisfaction, just a number of the topics that we ask employees about. Now, if you go to the city's strategic plan website, there are, of course, all the KPIs and all of the measure, all of the results. So if you go to engaged and empowered teams, you'll see the results that we have on the Employee Engagement Index. I just pulled up a snapshot to show you. The bottom one, the top one, shows the Employee Engagement Index overall. Basically, it's a scale of one to five. Our target has generally been four. And it's basically, we come up with that calculation based on all of the results and the responses we get from employees, and then it's a, we basically tabulate that, and we get an overall index that represents employee engagement. We also, I also have a snapshot here of kind of the job satisfaction one that's citywide. So all of that to say that we have, we just, we know just how important it is to hear from employees and to get effective feedback on just what it means to them to be a city employee, and how engaged they are, what their experience is. If we don't have effective ways of getting that feedback from them, we don't know how we're doing on engaged and empowered teams. We've had some challenges and identified some opportunities to improve ways that we can effectively hear that employee voice. So we started doing this a few years ago, this engagement survey, and we have been challenged with participation rates. You know, there has been employ, and this is not unique to the city. This is an issue in other employers too, but employees might be hesitant to participate because they're not sure what's, hey, what's going to be done with these results? Are they indeed confidential? And they are. But we started partnering with an external third party, with Wichita State, to help us, so that they kind of, they deploy the survey, and then they also tabulate the results and have the data, and then report it to us as the employer. So we've tried that, and that's been, you know, increasingly successful. We've worked with them a few times now. But there has been a challenge with now, okay, now we're working with a third party, and employees are unsure, okay, so who is this? Why is Wichita State emailing me? So one lesson learned from both of those experiences is communication is so critical, as with anything in employment. We've got, we've been working really hard on trying to effectively communicate with our employees about why they should participate, why they should trust participating in the survey, and try to also demonstrate, most importantly, we're going to do something with the results. You can actually make an impact by participating. So you see here like a flyer that we used recently to encourage participation in surveys. So I'll, I'll hopefully be able to come back to you in just a few months to talk to you specifically about our most recent results, which are, we just finished our 2024 survey, and our plans for what we're going to do with that. But I am excited to report, I don't have those results yet, but that our participation rates are looking really good. We just wrapped it up a few, a few weeks ago, and while last time we did this survey, we only had about 50% of employees participate, this year we have about 65%. So we're really excited about that. We've worked really intently with departments and leadership and supervisors, hey, please encourage your employees to participate. So we also have tried something new. A few months ago, we deployed what we call a pulse survey, again, working with Wichita State, and that's an opportunity to get more frequent feedback from employees. Instead of waiting annually, we're curious to see, hey, what's going on in May, or what's going on in October that might impact employee engagement? So this is something new we tried. We also, we just sample 100 employees, so it's not a citywide thing. We want to avoid survey burnout. We are constantly seeing a lot of information to our employees, asking for their feedback. We want to be really diligent and careful about managing that workload for them. So that's something new we tried. Again, there were challenges with participation rate. With just 100 employee sample, you got to get a really high participation rate for that to be statistically significant. So something new we tried. We're going to be using lessons learned from all of this to keep improving how we're hearing from employees and effectively measuring how, you know, our KPI, the progress we're making on the Engagement Index. I want to talk about just a few of the strategies that we've been deploying to promote and advance employee engagement or engaged and empowered teams. So with employee recognition and celebrations, this is because, this has become more important to us, because we've heard from employees in surveys that they want to feel connected with, within their teams and across teams. And so we've been working to have at least one event every quarter. We've been recognizing Public Service Appreciation Week. We've done proclamations here for that a couple of years. We have events for that, celebrating them. We have Employee Appreciation Day. And they might be informal things, where people are just coming together and meeting other employees from departments and celebrating. And then we also have, we've been starting these red carpet events. It sounds really fancy, but it's really not. But it's, I kind of see it as like a pop-up employee appreciation, where a small team will come together and go and celebrate another team. And it's a way to highlight the great work that's being done. And those have been going really well. So we know just how important it is to pause and recognize. We're all so busy that it's hard to take that time, and so we've been trying to be intentional about that. We've also been finding new ways for employees to stay connected with one another and to feel more rooted within and engaged within the organization. So we're excited that there's been an employee resource group called MOXIE. It's for women in the workplace. It's been underway for a couple of years now, and it's going strong. And we're going to be working on ways to encourage more employee resource groups. It's really about employees coming together around maybe a shared identity or a shared interest, and supporting one another, and maybe finding ways to enhance how we support employees within that shared identity. And so it's kind of more of a grassroots effort, and I'm excited about what the future will look like with hopefully more employee resource groups. We also find, we've, we've been doing lunch and learns to share about monthly important information with employees and have them connect just for a quick 20-minute lunch and learn for the last year or so. We've also been reevaluating and kind of retooling how we do human resources work, because we know how critical that is for employee engagement. So we've improved the performance evaluation process, just as an example, to make it less formulaic and more focused on improving the relationship between the supervisor and the employee. So it's more about a conversation and trying to build that relationship, because that supervisor relationship is just so critical to employee engagement, the experience in the workplace. We also know that navigating HR and all those things that come with HR, everyone kind of has a stereotype or a perception of what that might is, what that might be, be for them. We know that that can be maybe a little intimidating for some employees, just because they're not familiar with it. So we have a new kind of business model or approach we have, where we have basically business partners or basically an HR rep for each department. And so if you're an employee in a specific department, you should know that you have at least one person that you can always go to in HR for help. If you ask my team what drives them, one of the, like, unifying things across my team and in HR is that we want to help employees. We want to be there for them, and that's really exciting to think about, like, what that means. So the new model that we've done has been promoting that. We've also been working with another commitment area with equity and inclusion on some affirmative action planning that's still underway, but it's really about, hey, looking at our current workforce, our recruitment efforts, and how are we promoting diversity to reflect our community? And so I'm excited about that strategic work with another commitment area. And then as we've talked about here before, just how important market-based pay is, and that we've remained committed to that, and that we know how important that is for engaged and empowered teams. Finally, another key factor for employee engagement is professional development and training. Our LEED program is a leadership development program available to city employees. We have about 20 participate every year, and it has really taken off, and it's growing and changing, evolving, to meet like the, where we want to go with the strategic plan and specifically with employee engagement. We've added a mentoring program to it to try to enforce those connections across the organization. So this is a mentorship program where a LEED participant, and LEED participants are typically not supervisors. So they're people who are interested in growing in their career, but it's connecting them with some, someone in another city department usually, and forging that support network. So we've been excited about that. We've also been finding new ways to embed leadership throughout the organization. We've been dipping our toe into promoting the Kansas Leadership Center leadership curriculum in LEED, and then we're looking at other ways, so that's been exciting too. And then also, we want to support our supervisors. Being a city supervisor has a lot of demands, and we know it's important for them to be in a good position to support, support their teams. So we offer regular supervisor training. Recently, some topics have been psychological safety, things like managing conflict and things like that. I like these two photos on this slide because they're from our, our LEED class. The top one is actually, the person presenting is a member of the police department who used to be in LEED the year prior. Now, look, he's come back and he's presenting to our LEED class. So we like to have them come back and work with our, our LEED participants. And then the bottom one is graduation from a couple of years ago. Finally, another way we've been partnering with another commitment area is trying to tell the Team Lawrence story. We've gotten good feedback when we've been trying to do this more effectively on social media and internally. We know employees want to know more about what other city departments are doing, and so we're trying to share that internally and externally. These are just some snapshots of recent posts that we've done together with communications on kind of team development, and then also like individuals within the city. So, oh, I forgot to mention an earlier slide. So, oh, I forgot to mention on an earlier slide, I have a question at the bottom that's like, what's missing? With employee engagement, everyone has so many good ideas. There's so much more that we could be doing that we just don't have the resources to do. So really, it's about trying to take our current resources and investing them where it really matters. So one way we're trying to do that is by putting a structure in place that will get employees engaged in this important work from throughout the organization, no matter what level they're at. To develop engagement strategies that will actually move the needle on our KPI and improve engagement, we need to make sure that we're doing things that are meaningful to our employees. So we want to get them involved in this work. We've recently been meeting with the ERC, the Employee Relations Council. That's a group that's been around since the seventies here with the City of Lawrence and has been, has had a legacy on getting employees involved and having a place for them to share their concerns and issues. So we're trying to, we want to work with the ERC on having this new structure in place that's really looking at, hey, where do we want to go? So these are some of the topics that our committees are going to focus on. We're working on deploying that. And that's going to be a big focus for us in the next few months, as well as looking at our recent survey results and developing effective strategies. So I'll look forward to hopefully coming back and sharing that with you. And that is the conclusion.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions for Megan?
Two questions, Megan. Remind me, when did we put in the new HO, like, technology?
Oh.
I mean.
The day four system?
Yeah, the day four. When was that?
Early last year or so, January 2023.
So how has that gone and how's that impacting what we've been doing just overall?
Well, I think the first year was, well, anytime you deploy a new software, there are growing pains. So we definitely experienced those, but it's more of a one-stop-shop for HR and payroll data, which we really appreciate. So it's been cool to see my team actually get really enthusiastic about the software and want to learn more. And we know that there's like so much more that it can do that we're not quite doing yet. And so we still feel a lot of enthusiasm around, around that. But we're fully implemented, although we did experience those growing pains, but nothing too concerning. It's, it's been an improvement for sure.
Good.
Yeah.
And maybe this is, you don't have to answer this, but besides supporting market rate pay, is there anything we can be doing as a city commission to, to help? I know, I mean, more on the policy level, not the, you know.
On the policy level?
On the management level, I'm just, you don't have to answer this.
Well, I saw Craig get his microphone in front of him.
Sure. No, I appreciate this. Engage and Empowered Teams. I talk about this quite a bit behind the scenes and I'm pleased to talk about it here in front of the scenes. You're a part of that team and I communicate that to our department directors and to our employees all the time. And so I appreciate that question because you do hard work up here that affects the operations of the organization and the operations of the organization affect how you are experiencing and how the community interacts with you as our political leadership. And so I think sometimes you do such hard work on the policy level that it's hard, it's hard to also pay attention to everything that happens day to day going forward. So I appreciate it when you all make comments about that. I get feedback. I know Megan and the other department directors get feedback about any of the recognitions that you all do.
Yeah.
And I know you're also out in the community and attending a lot of events. Those are, go a long ways because everybody, everybody who does anything with this organization, including you all, are very, have very full plates. And so we don't take, when Megan's talking about taking time to celebrate, taking time to take a breath, taking time to recognize each other's work, that's you, but that's also the folks out there. So I completely agree in the busy pace that we all keep, anything that you all do to recognize that, because you, you do share that with me privately. Wow, we did a lot that with that. So I'd say that's one big piece that you and, and shared leadership with me can affect the employees and just being seen and heard and recognized in the work that they're doing.
Yeah, totally agree. Employees are listening and those messages of support do mean a lot, so.
Any questions for Megan or us in the room or public comments in the room?
Yes, there is one online.
Okay.
Wow, that was very interesting. Julie Jones here. I'm a baby boomer myself and so I would have just been happy with the market rate pay. I would never have expected all of that other rah-rah stuff, you know? Even as a teacher, no, no. Just give me the money and let me go to work and do my job and go home. So interesting how the dynamics have changed in the workforce. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have another comment. Michael O'Reilly.
Yeah, it's Lawrence Accountability there, Sherri, just, just to remind you what's on the screen there. I want to, you know, comment on what Julie said there. You know, we do a lot of congratulating ourselves. I wonder how many of you have had a great conversation with Craig where you congratulated him with how great we've done on homelessness? Sorry, that's all I got.
Okay. Thanks, Michael.
That's all the comments.
All right, very good. Back to the commission. Any feedback or comments about what's been presented or anything that we talked about today?
That was a great update and I'm really, yeah, it's a, really glad to see all that.
Thank you.
And.
Happy to be here, so.
I appreciate the comments by Craig and yourself and definitely taking note, so.
Yeah, and it's nice to see the, the metrics, but again, to your point, we want people participating, whatever data we can get, we want it to be valuable to us, but it's nice to know that at least some of these things are, seem to be having an impact. And really what I want to know is that people are comfortable, you know, providing us with what we need in order to do our jobs and, you know, they, they need to have that comfort level that they can speak out when they're not comfortable. And I feel like that's what we need to provide them is a, is a conduit for that. Even if it's not to us, it's through you. And I feel like reaching out to them more regularly allows them to feel comfortable with doing that. I think that's important. So thank you for.
Thank you, yeah.
For what you're doing there. And I appreciate the, all the employees, you know, participating as much as possible so we can provide them the best, you know, conditions and then also make changes as necessary to improve the workforce and how we're providing the service. So thank you very much, Megan, and appreciate the.
Thanks, Mayor.
Stuff today.
And I was going to say, and we don't always, we come on, on this from time to time, but, you know, we have such a diverse workforce in what they do. I mean, I, I do some HR work with, you know, our 60 employees, but we all do kind of the same thing. I mean, to, to, I appreciate the work you do. I mean, obviously what police do is a lot different than MSO, which is a lot different than the accountants, which is a lot different than, you know, the different, and so, you know, working and trying to create that employee satisfaction across all those departments, I know, you know, does take a lot of work. So appreciate that and appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, I guess we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is item F, commission items. Are there any commission items that anyone wants to bring up tonight?
Just, just two little things. One related to our conversation around the development code. I did notice the planning commission agenda came out and there was two county items and two text amendments. It's all that's in December. So, you know, I think a lot of people are waiting for the new code to come about to get some of the projects in. So I'm, I'm glad we're moving forward to that. But it's been like that last month, but again, this month, you know, people are waiting. So, second, just wanted to, I mentioned last time we had the CJCC strategic planning and I was reappointed to that. And so that strategic plan is, is going to move forward. Hopefully it'll be made, it should be made public in January, at least the draft, and be adopted in, or at least considered for adoption in February by the CJCC. So hopefully you guys can be on the lookout and the community can be on the lookout for that. But I also wanted to note that the county commission, not us, but the county commission has, I believe, three appointments to that, that they'll be making citizen appointments that they'll be making, I think, in January or early February. And so there's an application process that just went out, I think, today on the county commission website. So if anyone who wants to serve on the CJCC can request that through the, the county commission. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Selvus, something?
Yeah, I wanted to see if we could get a city manager's report back on if there are any municipalities in the region that offer local cold weather policies. So we know we have the statewide cold weather rule in regards to utilities. I'd be curious to know if there's anyone either statewide or within the region that offer local cold weather policies for local utilities such as water and sewer services. So if we can get that back in the city manager's report, just outlining if, what they are and what those policies are, that'd be great.
Might support.
Yes, I would support as well.
Cold weather policies, so. So ways to, people to continue to have utilities when conditions are poor and unable to pay, I think, is what we're getting at, yes? Or, or just a.
Just, I would like to see what's out there so that, yeah. I mean, I don't want anyone to go without. I also don't want this to be seen as a way for someone that may be delinquent that they can realize that.
I understand. Got it. So, yeah, so, so emergency procedure for that.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, any, any other commission items? Want to review the future agenda? Any comments on that? Anybody? Okay.
Real quick, the tobacco retail license density report. I know we've had that on the parking lot for a while. Are we waiting for something for the health department on that or?
No, I know, I'm pretty sure it's ready. Jeff had sent that to me and asked, you know, how we wanted to present that and I think it's going to come back as a CM report. That's what we were talking about.
Okay.
And so that, that should be coming back soon.
Okay.
I just, they have a lot on their plate. I think they're trying to get things on.
So it's just a matter of how it's being delivered?
It should be soon.
Okay. But you're thinking city manager's report?
I think that's right unless you're wanting something different. I know he pulled some information on it. I can see if Jeff's on and, but I, I believe that's the one we were talking about.
Yeah. I know when we discussed it, I know we were wondering if there's going to be a report back out specifically around the, around fines and fees, so.
I thought it was.
This is a density report, but I'm, I'm trying to kind of loop it into the whole bigger circle back in regards to the tobacco retail license when we passed it. And I know we talked about having them come back and report out on how that project has been going. So I don't know if there'd be, this is an opportunity to have a bigger conversation. I'm speaking other things into existence right now.
They did do that through a city manager's report, right? We did have that on, yes, on the, how the program's going. That was already on. And then this, I thought, was the follow-up, was, was they wanted us to, we're looking at, you know, limiting density and so planning has provided a report and a follow-up memo on that.
Okay.
And again, I know it's ready, it's just a matter of getting it on an agenda.
Okay. But it's going to come to us as a city manager's report.
Unless you want something else.
I think that's a good start.
Timeframe for that or is there, do you kind of have an idea when you want to see it back here?
Well, it sounded like Sherri said it's coming.
Jeff, I mean, he messaged me and said, here is the memo, how do we want to share this? And it's going to come back. So I, I can't imagine it wouldn't be, I don't see Jeff on, but I think it should be able to maybe even be on the next meeting or beginning of January.
Okay.
That'd be fine. Just want to make sure we get a timeframe for that since it's been out there, I guess. Any other future agenda questions? Okay. City manager's report?
Thanks, Mayor. The, the primary item on here is the annual update for our accreditation with LDCFM. It's a, you know, it's a lengthy and informative report, but there is a nice summary on the front, which I always appreciate. But they continue to have, to make progress, but there are some challenges that there, that we need to address. So it's a, it's a very interesting report if you take the time to read it.
Any commissioners have any comments on his report?
I mean, I, we talked about this last year. I mean, I certainly looked at the report and, you know, this whole conversation of expanded fire stations and how that affects travel time is going to be a continued conversation that we have to figure out. And I look forward to partnering with fire and, and staff trying to figure that out because it's a, it's a big issue.
Okay, anything else?
It's subject to public comment.
Any public comments matter? In the room? Anybody online?
No, we are.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other items on the commission calendar you want to talk about under item H? I don't have anything. Just wanted to make sure anyone wanted to have any meeting issue or questions on there? Nope?
Nope.
All right. No questions on the calendar. We'll go ahead and move on to item I, which is the ending of the live broadcast. And we'll give those who need to leave a chance to move out of the room and then move on to the open public comment.